Here, you see Mr. Raischek, Mark is not here. Mr. Rusk is here and Mr. Greeter is not here and we're not in here. So we do have an alternate, a new alternate, Colleen Lotrup. And I'm going to see Colleen tonight for this meeting.
This one. Last name? C O L E N. Last name's L A U T R U P.
All right. Next thing I want to do, before we do the minutes, is we need to make a change to the agenda to add an eight twenty-four referral. So.
Regular.
To be under, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Add that under regular meeting. So is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Russ. Second by Mr. Boris. For the discussion on the motion, all those in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, so that adding that to the agenda is approved five zero zero. All right, next item up is the minutes from the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Planning and zoning commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Boris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rusk. All right, anybody have any changes or comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and extensions, that would be. Miss Lotrup. All right, so it was approved four zero one. Okay, next item is a public hearing for zoning amendment. This is a text amendment. It's number TA zero one dash two four. Kevin Farrar, section four point three D, four point three point D. Add sailmaker under six thousand square feet of space as a permitted use and that's in the G C zone, correct? All right. So I'll read the public hearing procedure. Good evening, I am Paul Cockamuller, Chair of the City of Crotten Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to open the public hearing for text amendment number TA zero one dash two four. Kevin Farrar applicant, section four point three point D, add sailmaker under six thousand square feet of space as a permitted use. Purpose of this public hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicant, proponents, opponents, and all interested parties or citizens who wish to comment on the aforementioned application. It is important to note that once this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application with any other member of the commission, the applicant or applicant's agent, member of the public or interested party, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. This hearing is being recorded and meeting minutes are being documented. Anyone wishing to speak shall do so from the microphone. Please state your name clearly, spelling your last name for the record, and provide your address. Please speak slowly into the microphone and reintroduce yourself each time you speak. The commission uses the following procedure during public hearing. Each hearing will be introduced. The applicant or designated agent will present the application. The commission and staff will have the opportunity to ask questions or provide comments. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address staff and commission questions and comments. The chair will then ask for public comments in the following order. Comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition to the application, comments that are neither in favor or opposition of the application. Any questions to the applicant, staff, or commission shall be addressed through the chair. The chair will then pose the question or questions to the appropriate party or parties. Please limit public comments to how the application does or does not comply with land use regulations or the P O C D. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address public comments and questions. Commission and staff will be provided further opportunity to ask additional questions and offer further comments. These may be directed to the applicant or a member of the public who previously commented or submitted information for the record. The applicant and members of the public will have one opportunity to respond to the commission and staff questions or comments. The commission will then decide whether to close or continue the public hearing to a future date. Once the hearing is closed, the commission is unable to hear additional comments or accept exhibits or correspondence in favor, opposition, or with a neutral position on the application. The commission will then deliberate upon the application. Deliberations will occur in a meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Deliberation will be posted on a meeting agenda and the public is welcome to listen to the commission's discussions. Agendas are proposed at a minimum of twenty-four hours, are posted at a minimum of twenty-four hours in advance of a regular or special meeting of the commission and are provided on the city's website and at the city clerk's office. During deliberations, commission members will discuss the application with input from staff. The commission will take into consideration relevant testimony and information provided by the applicant or members of the public. Following deliberations, the commission will then vote on the application. Vote outcomes could be to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or deny with prejudice. Are there questions regarding these procedures before I open the public hearing? All right, for the record, public hearing for text amendment. Application number TA zero one dash twenty-four, Kevin Farrar, section four point three point D. Add sailmaker under six thousand square feet of space as a permitted use in the G C zone is now open. Mr. Farrar, you're going to speak? Tell the application or someone else to speak?
Kevin is gonna. Kevin will give you a description of the sailmaking business. But I thank you for getting us in here in a quick order. Norman Pack, Peapwood Commercial Realty.
I'm like, I'm sorry, name and address, please.
Norman Pack, Peapwood Commercial Realty.
Green.
Thirty-two West Main Street, nine inch connect. Mr. Sissons, Kevin, we feel that this is appropriate use. Especially given that it's limited to six thousand square feet. It doesn't produce a lot of traffic, hardly any traffic. Quiet type of business. And I'll have Kevin, who has been a sailmaker for fifteen years, give you a description of the business.
All right, Kevin Farrar, F A R R A R, and my home address is two zero two, this Tuxedon Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. Basically, sailmaking is very, very low traffic in the middle of the winter if we have one or two customers per week. It's a busy week in October, or rather, in January or February. We are considered a light manufacturer. We also do considerable amount of businesses, also sale repair, basically running selling machines. We do custom fabrication of sales, design and cutting, sewing, and final handwork and finishing of the sales. Kevin? Questions? We've been in, been sailmaking for fifty-three years. Starting with Sandy Van Zandt in old Mystic, Connecticut, in, on January seventh nineteen seventy-one, and I've been doing it consistently ever since. We have owned a business, a building, rather, in New London at Sixth Union Street, which we have a purchase agreement on for a company that wants to turn it into apartments. Parking has gone from difficult to impossible in New London. And the beauty of the thirty-six Fang Street location is it has twenty-five or more parking spots. And it's one floor where we have basically two floors that are part of the loft in New London. And carrying the Amistad sails on last year took five of us to quite literally roll the foresail up the sail because it weighed five hundred and fifty pounds or more. So we do have done a part of it of classic yacht, building, not yacht, sail building. And we do, kind of, that's a portion of our business as well as the local sailing market.
All right. Any staff comments?
No, we've met and we have a full explanation of what is entailed, including, you may want to actually address this on record, just the issue of noise and vibration.
Yeah, okay. The, we're really quite a quiet, you know, and frankly, environmental friendly, you know, business. The.
Noise and vibration.
No, oh, no, I'm sorry, okay, we're pretty quiet, okay, we have a hydraulic press, which you don't need to wear earplugs on. We have a, probably our noisiest machine is the vacuum pump for our river cutting table, which is basically a computerized machine that has a vacuum pump to it to hold the fabric down. And, you know, we use that, you know, we're building new sales or cutting numbers and stuff like that. It's sort of like a CNC machine. It's not particularly noisy and even with the, even with windows open, I don't think you would hear it at the sidewalk level. It really is pretty quiet. The sewing machines are not much noisier than your home machine. The only noise that you might hear is the occasional, basically leather mallet, you know, getting banged on, you know, granite dies and stuff like that. So it's not, you know, it's not a constant racket. And because everything is done, virtually everything is done indoors, you know, there's no real outside hearing, you know, hearing issue. And we have. You know, I would expect that we would have probably no more than four employees in addition to myself. This past winter, it was myself and two, two other employees. You know, it would be good to have, but like many other businesses, finding people who know what they're doing is not an easy thing, especially in a fairly eclectic business.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm back, Peapwood Commercial, nine inch. I just wanted to let you know, realizing that this text amendment obviously pertains to the whole C G zone. Sailmaker, there's not a lot of sailmakers around, so. Kevin's planning on going into a building and Fang Street. Most likely, he'll be the only one within miles, so you wouldn't have to worry about a lot of showing up.
Thank you. Questions or comments from commissioners? Right here.
I was a little curious at first, the text amendment application doesn't, in what we're presented, didn't speak to an address at all or any of those things. It's only because you mentioned the address and now I know what you're talking about then. So I was kind of surprised that we're talking about adding an element to a zone without discussing a particular property.
Well, I guess the text amendment would, well, would allow it to be anywhere in the, we, this use would be added to any G, anywhere in the G C zone, which is, which is the way that the rigs are written for most, almost all permitted uses in the G C zone, barber shops or, you know, all like that, so.
But I guess what I'm saying is, would we expect to see an application to follow about the particular property?
Oh, that's a good question.
Or maybe not necessarily, you know.
Usually happens that way.
Okay.
It doesn't have to.
Okay.
Would, would they need to present it if it's in the regulations as a permitted use? If it's in the regulations as permitted use? At the.
You need a site plan?
You need, yeah, you need to give us, you'll need to give us an application for site plan, but it would be. I will help walk you through that process. It wouldn't be a very, for instance.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna change the zoning code to allow it, so.
My only question would be, how can we help you grow?
Wrong question, wrong creation.
Yeah.
Fifty-three years ago, we've been shrinking. Excuse me, Norman Pack, Peapwood, Connecticut. Are you saying that you would be site plan approval after this text amendment?
Yeah, what we're, what we're doing in this effort is to change the zoning regulations to allow the use. And then you, and then once it's an allowed use, permitted use.
You are.
By right, we're applying for.
Okay, but the application's not clear on it, so the commission need to make the decision about whether it would be by right, site plan, special permit. In order to go through with this and just so I don't forget, also establish an effective date should you go through through that.
It's not the application looks by right.
That's a permitted use.
Okay.
Okay. So, so, but we, I mean, we can make it, we deliver it, we could make it by right, but then that would be for everybody, correct?
Everybody who wanted to be a sailmaker.
Now, there are other, just to be very clear, there are other aspects that have been addressed by this applicant, that everything's being done indoors and and about the noise level. It's possible that if someone else were to come in with asking to be able to do the same thing, that they might need to come in for a site plan approval because of the noise level or because of any outside work. That's what would, could trigger a higher level of review. So you have to separate the individual specifics of the applicant from the use.
Right, right, that's why.
And then it's just the use that you would be voting on.
We're moving the use term.
The use and what level of permit that would require.
Okay, so.
Basically, what paragraph does it go in some regulations?
All right. Any other questions or comments? So I guess, I have one question about what, under six thousand square feet, what's the, is there a reason for that?
Norman Pack, Peapwood. Yes, this is for your use. We felt, we didn't put a square footage limit on it. You would think, oh, they were gonna have a fifteen thousand square foot industrial build. We're trying to narrow it down for your benefit.
Okay. All right, yeah, just.
The number was proposed, yeah.
Okay, that's kind of unusual, you know, is it in permitted use?
Kevin, for the building that we're hoping to lease is the Spicer Propane Building at thirty-six Fang Street. And it's about, I think it's something like five thousand, five thousand seven hundred square feet, so it fits what's there. And the, and what's there actually would work very, very well as a loft. Not hundred percent ideal, but it would. The ability to have customers park and bring their sales in, you know, from a relative few feet away, rather than having them parking in municipal parking, several hundred yards away and carrying a sixty pound sail up the sidewalk in the rain. Just, just isn't working in the London anymore. Parking really, since bought that building in nineteen ninety-eight. And it's got, it was difficult then and it's clearly impossible now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Excuse me, I'm long tech. Being in the commercial real estate business, I read a lot of regulations from many towns around Connecticut. And it's not uncommon for a sailmaker to be placed in a non-industrial zone. I've seen it. It's considered sort of like a big seam, a big seamstress, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, to me, the use in the G C zone seems reasonable. Any other opinions I have?
Well, I guess over deliberation, we talked more about it, but I think the six thousand square foot cutoff kind of makes sense in terms of by right, under that, maybe more restriction over that, because that would, you know, create potential more noise, but that's deliberation time. I'm grateful for the applicant. Sounds like a very cool thing to add to the city.
I do like the question. My question relates more to, and you may not have an answer to this, but where it's six thousand square feet, I don't want to approve a regulation for one person. I guess my question is more of other sailmaking in the area, or how many square feet did you have in New London? Is that the average for a sailmaking building or?
Kevin Farrar. The amount of space we have in New London is slightly less than twelve thousand square feet, but that's on, that's including a basement and two floors and an odd shaped building. And what we're actually working in, in, what we're, size of the loft that we're actually working in is probably a third of that, we're probably somewhere around four thousand square feet, so this is in total unusable square footage. Okay, this is a step up. This would be a step up for us. As far as sizes of lofts, the competition in Sri Lanka are probably, you know, you know, you know, a hundred thousand square foot lofts. They're very, very big. You know, the Van Zandt, old Van Zandt loft, which is in Old Mystic, that's where I started working a long time ago. And at that time, that was a, I believe it was a sixty by eighty foot building and somewhere, somewhere around five thousand square feet plus or minus, you know, and that worked very, very well for many, many years. The Softstat Building, I think, was probably about, the old Softstat Building, an old, say, worked many, many years ago, was probably about that same size. So, I mean, it's, it's sufficient unless you're, you're doing really high production with lots and lots of, and that, that's just not happening. On one, quite frankly, I think there's probably, you could count sailmakers that are actually building in the United States, or for that matter, North America, probably on your two veins. I mean, it's, so much has gone overseas, it's ridiculous.
All right. Additional questions or comments, Mr. Russ?
I was just gonna say that we will be closing the public hearing.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Rusk. And seconded by Mr. Boris. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing done, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, all right. Motion to close the public hearings, approved five zero zero. We're ready to deliberate.
Just one reminder, you mentioned it, but again, this is for the entire zone, this is not for the specific site. It would actually be possible for them to come in and make a presentation to you without ever mentioning the site, so.
Yep, thanks for the clarification, understood. All right, question or comments?
I'll just restate what I said before, the six thousand square foot cutoff sounds like a very reasonable way to assure anything above that, you know, maybe not by right. You can, you know, it would be more of an industrial scale, noise would be a consideration, but I think it makes sense to, you know, propose. It just might just.
Well, we had language about the size of the breweries that could exist in the zone. You know, we had a square footage requirement per. How many passes, right, right, the X number of barrels or cans or something. And so, I mean, I get, I get the idea of establishing a threshold, at least in terms of, you know, what level of approval is required for the site use. I don't know, I don't know that I, that we need to specify that in, in the type of use. The reason why I ask that, say that is, is I'm thinking of, and I don't have in front of me, what, what level of permission is applied to light industrial if we want to use that label? Because I think, I think if we, you know, it helps to understand the location. I understand that it's for the entire zone, but to, but to put the proposed use in context, for me, it was helpful to think of the intended use in this case. So I, I think that if you had another sailmaker, say, come in and want to use, you know, want to establish a, a five-story industrial facility of a site of the old roller ring, that would be a different conversation because of the, the nature of the use. Sailmaker, I don't think, would, would just use that term encompass all the aspects of the level of the permission required for the use of the site. If we're talking about industrial presses and industrial, you know, looms and things like that, it's a different story than this, and I don't even know if this qualifies as light industrial by our definitions.
Yeah, I mean, do we even have a light industrial definition?
We don't. And typically, when industrial uses are included in zoning regulations now, there may be one for heavy, one for light, and there are other criteria that are added into that text that say things like, you know, decibel levels, the amount of traffic or, or even if it's not the amount of traffic, the amount of parking that they would need. There are a lot more criteria that get incorporated into that. It's. These regulations are actually a bit of an anomaly still at this point because we tend to list things so specifically. In, in more recently revised regulations, you get things like light industrial or, or heavy industrial or heavy manufacturing, whatever. And they come with sort of different type of metric, but they come with metric, more metrics. So I think that this, the metric you're looking at here is the number of square feet and you know, how, how much of a sale, with how many employees and, and machines, and all based on the testimony that you heard. Could you fit into six thousand square feet versus fifteen thousand? Could you fit into six thousand square feet versus fifteen thousand? You can also, um, when the. When and if an application comes forward, you would then be looking at that as a. Specific application for a specific site and you would be able to. If it comes, if it's not, and if it's not an as of right, you could attach specific conditions to it. Just a scenario. If you were to approve this as, as a right. With the threshold of six thousand square feet. What you would have is then anything above six thousand square feet. Would have to come to you. Maybe even as a. Special permit or site plan, in which case you would have the same critical review that you. See with, with applications that you see every one.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, how much can you do in, in under six thousand feet? Uh, my thought is, I don't know that six thousand feet is the, is the metric that, that you use to decide. The impact of the use.
So are you suggesting instead of saying six thousand feet? That it be sort of light manufacturing or industrial? Versus heavy?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know how we.
Yeah, because when, you know, I think there has to be some type. Because. If it's, if it's, if it's the five stories that you were talking about with the roller ring. I would assume that would make a lot more noise than a six thousand foot. Location, so there has to be some kind of designation. Of a cutoff before you need to come in for a special.
Right, and I don't know if you could squeeze in, you know, industrial, uh. You know, uh, looms and things within six thousand square feet that. To, you know, produce the fabric yourself, you know, or something, I'm just trying to think of. How, how bad could you get under six thousand feet where we would say, oh no, why do we allow that by right? You know, what, what? What tripwire should we set for ourselves where, uh, these gentlemen, you know, you know, the process started without having to come back. The commission, uh, if that's appropriate, you know, and not set us up for. Maybe, maybe it's just the fact that we're probably not going to be inundated, inundated by other sailmaker requests. Maybe that's enough of a, you know, safety net, but. I, I, the space, the, the square footage consideration to me is. My first thought of, is this a? You know. How intense is the use?
Okay, yep, thank you, um. Any other comments? There's a lot of comments for you.
Um, I was thinking. Um, I think the question about whether the six thousand feet is the right metric. Bring up what other metrics would we use, and we've talked a lot about noise, I mean, the other one that in the industry in general can be. An issue with is, like smells, things like that, so I'm assuming that there's not a lot of dyes and it's like very, yeah. Not, I mean, that's an issue with sailmaking.
Can we go with Sunday, June 9? I prefer having effective dates be over the weekend so that Friday you may be able to do something, but it's really clear in record that my Monday you can't or vice versa.
Certainly. Mr. Ross, did you?
I did not, but I will.
Motion by Mr. Ross, second by Mr. Boris.
Now it's that motion.
Motion effective with an effective date of June 9.
Correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Let me clarify, I move that we approve this application for adding the use to the GC zone of sailmaker under 6,000 square feet of space. As a, as a use approved by right. With an effective date of June 9.
All right, very good. Thank you. And that's seconded by Mr. Boris as well. All right. So any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? All right, that application is approved by 00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A big thank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I'm expecting a really cool waving sign as I.
Congratulations.
Speaking of special use. You're thinking like. DB and Spizer.
My Navy days, if I ever needed something done at the sail loft, I had to bring a 40 pound can of coffee with me when I went to the store.
At least you knew the.
Experience. I don't know if I carried it that much, what do you think?
All right. Next, I know the agenda is regular meeting, that's where we added the CGS 824 referral, public access easement, city of Groton, grantor to town of Groton, grantee for 1268 Quantic Road, pin number 169807584778E. Leslie, can you?
Yeah.
Speak to this, please. This is a, this is a, this is a endorsed, non-endorsed recommend.
Yes. So this 824, which is. I'll do the whole. 824, which is the section of the Connecticut State statutes that requires any municipality that is acquiring, dispensing with, altering in any major way or making any major changes to municipally owned properties. They are required to. So that at the beginning of that process is that the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to give a referral to the Legislative Council, positive or negative, and that referral is based upon whether it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. The property in question is 1268 Quantic Road. You tell us, wrote this to us.
We're talking about a different property.
Nope.
I thought we were talking about 352 things. That's what was sent out.
I, I did get a picture of a brick building, but I didn't know what that point was. That was just demolition of some, of the property.
Well, that was, that was the last one. We clearly did that one for the cost of property there. That's what, that is what came.
This one.
Oh, okay, the one that you printed out.
The cost of property we did months ago.
Yeah, that was the demolition of the cost of. That's why I was.
I apologize for some wrong things. Okay, never mind, it doesn't matter, it's all still legal. Yep.
I was having deja vu all over again, I thought I was part of that decision to construct a property.
Okay, so it's, as stated, 1268 Quantic Road, which is owned by the city, operated by Groton Utilities and is located in the town.
Oh, I get, yeah, I was gonna say.
I, my apologies.
Thank you.
No. So what's before you is, as you know, I like to write things so that you can approve them. The decision to approve or not is up to you, but I like to put it in form of approval. So. This is written based on, basically it's an easement to allow the town to construct a pedestrian walkway and a crossing over the Quantic River. Waterway. On city owned property for the purpose of extending and connecting, it's part of the tri. Yeah. Like that's. The. So what we don't have is, we don't have an A2T2 survey, we don't have the minimum bounds exactly, but it's generally described in here as. Written this so that we, they probably will not need to come back for another A22, for another 824, I can encompass everything that they would need in here. The most important piece of that is that on receipt of an A2T2 survey, of the effective portion of the parcel number is 1268 Quantic Road, the city of Groton further approves the right to construct a pedestrian walkway and bridge. On completion, the city of Groton further approves the right for the public to access this walkway and bridge. So it gives them permission to do the whole thing, basically. They have it split, the town, the way their memo was written, it is split into at least two, maybe three. A24s and in the interest of making it simpler. So they have to give us the A2T2, we need to know.
Okay, so questions or comments from commissioners?
Who's giving us the A2T2?
The town. Has to be A2T2, by state law has to be by them, that sort of.
Okay. So the. The applicant, more or less, is the town of Groton.
Right.
Okay. And just I'm thinking this out loud. We are. We're changing the use of that city owned property.
Is the glitter of it.
In that, we are allowing more public access to it in the form of a pedestrian bicycle bridge that, that actually makes that section of Quantic Road safer to navigate by pedestrians and bicycles.
Correct.
And that bridge would go over that, that stream, Quantic River.
And then connect to the.
Back to the Quantic Road.
And then it would cross Route 1 or Quantic Road to the, they're going to do a riverwalk and there'll be an extension of the pedestrian path that's on town property.
Oh, okay. I got you.
What comes from city property.
But this, but this is right across the street from the, right across Route 1 from where that, where that UC goal is, and then the, the water walk down along the river, that's, that's where this happens. And Groton Utilities, is, they have any concerns about this that are?
I have not seen anything in opposition from them.
Is there?
Their laws, right?
I did specify that. Again, that the pedestrian walkway and bridge should be roughly parallel to the roadway and you know, closer to the southern border, I mean, sort of. Tried to, and reference the map, that sketch that they provided us. So I tried to put in as enough stops that if somehow they decided they wanted to, you know, I don't, I can't imagine this would happen, but they wanted to run through the middle of the parcel that that would, you know, we would say, no, that's not what we authorized.
And then, and then, and we're not actually the decision maker here.
Correct. This is a referral.
Council is the decision.
Correct.
That's right. Okay. The referral is. Referrals, our, it's our referral to say, is it consistent basically with the plan of conservation?
It's a consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and then there are two examples of where it is, and one very specific to the tri-town trails. But the other is, the other thing is that how it goes to the council depends on how the council has to vote. If it, if you send a positive referral, then the council would only need a majority vote to authorize it. If you send a negative referral, they would need a super majority.
To override or?
To override.
So.
In any event, there's, the council is still the, just the final decision.
So to my mind, it's hard to say that this isn't consistent with the POCD for the reasons Mr. Ross shared, but the question just is, as you said, if the drawing shows it going, you know, 40 feet deeper into the property and stuff like that, then that necessarily, yeah, even though it's consistent, it's a little egregious to consume that much space, so.
That's why I cited this sketch that they sent us.
Yeah.
And. So it's, it's, that is part of the memorandum which you are basing a decision on and the, the general location. So. You know, could they, I mean, I'm sure there's some way to rescind an A24 by the, by the Legislative Council, but I don't expect that that would be necessary, and we do have clear language in the POCD looking to continue this trail system.
That's their sketch, though.
It's theirs.
So it's, it's a representation of their intent.
Exactly.
And the only, the only thing I would say is that depending on the land there and there's quite a bit of tide change that occurs, they'll have to pick a spot that's safe and, you know, structural, that they can have the sidewalk curve just so and get a footing for a bridge. You know, so whether it's five feet from the roadway or 25 feet from the roadway, you know, unless it turns into, you know, something crazy.
Water's fine.
Right.
Right. Extreme staying.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I think any, anything that we can do, this is, this is walkability and vikability, which are huge in the planning, conservation, and development. There any, anything we can do beyond more with our little portion of this, connecting to the other town riverwalk element. I think that, you know, I would recommend a favorable recommendation at the council.
Other comments, commissioners, anybody else that I made ahead? I, I'm not, I agree, I think this is certainly. All right, I'm sorry.
I do think it's important that when this is established and there's a plan to get developed, that this crossing of the road between that northern side and southern side be reviewed and made safe. That's mainly concerned at this time, I think it is in line with the plan.
Yeah, I thought about that too, and the fact that, you know, it's so close to an established stoplight intersection. It could be, it could be the lockwood, I understand the timing of it and the entrance to the riverwalk, but it could be a, could be a traffic constraint of its own there, but that, but that honestly, that's on the town's
Right.
side, so our input, you know, there is a, you know, that works a lot.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good point tonight, you know, they'll, and it, you know, it's, but it's, it's not a town road, so we'll have to, the town will have to deal with.
Not only is it, oh, is it not a city road, but it's Route 1.
Right.
The lead is a state road.
Right.
So.
Well, no, they, they, they put a crosswalk on Eastern Point Road on that, on the corner of Tyler and Eastern Point, and like they'd hit the state to approve that.
Correct.
So that, you know, people walking to the, to the beach from that neighborhood and we, we, you know, had a better chance of surviving it. But anyways, so, yeah, but I mean, they, they. They did. So, um, sounds like that generally that we're good with a favorable recommendation, so is there a motion for a favorable recommendation here?
Still won't.
Motion by Mr. Boris, second. All right, by Ms. Lotra.
Mrs.
Mrs., I'm sorry. I, I meant to ask you now, not you. Mrs., Mrs. Lotra, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Not only hearing none, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? All right, that's a favorable recommendation by 00. Thank you. All right. Ongoing business, discussion of possible zoning regulation amendments. This Crea sent out a map in, at the end of April with, uh, to summarize our, our discussion at the last meeting, at the last few meetings, as well as the input received at the public hearing.
Correct.
And what, what commissioners think about the, the map?
Um. Again, um, with, as we have discussed.
That's part that matters to me the most.
Right. Right, well, we, I mean, we had had, uh, this is what I'm talking about, just so. You know, we had had some back and forth discussion, we had differences of opinion within the commissions about height restrictions in different areas there. And I, I think, I think we kind of, we came to a compromise where the GCR 50 zone that's on the riverside there would remain from, uh, from, you know, in those borders that are in this, this drawing. And, uh, and, and 50.75 is just as we discussed, so I, I mean, I think this takes all those things into consideration. To the, to the idea of the text part of the amendments. Is there anything we should think about or, or no? Cause it's been, it's been since December, maybe, since we really looked at that part, right? We've been thinking about geography, but, and height, building height, but there were some other elements to it. Is there anything that we, is it germane to tonight's discussion? Are, are we there yet with, uh, you know, trying to, trying to, uh, you know, call us, uh, uh, another application?
So.
Or we need to look at the text and talk about that again?
Okay, so we are going to need to write text for each, though, consider, even though they're all like GC 1.0, GC 2.0, you know, they're actually separate zones, we could have labeled them ABCD. They're separate zones, and so text needs to be written for each of those, and that includes all of the things that would be included in any zoning regulation for specific zones, so. For instance, there's the bulk regulations, in some cases, the bulk regulations are the same in two different zones, but the uses are different.
So when you say bulk regulations, what?
I'm sorry, it, so we have, we have the ones that are, we have a couple that are four, four stories at the street, but one of those is four stories at the street allowing two below them because there's such a drop off. So that that would be a total of six stories, but only four stories at the street. So even though the bulk regulations read, if not identical, but similar to each other, the, the tech, it's, all of that has to be in as separate for each, so. The other thing is looking at the uses, and we agreed that one of the reasons that we would allow the higher level up to six stories north of the parkway entrance, uh, the highway park, uh, entrance and exit, is that the impact of something larger would be much less up there, and they already have large or have had large buildings there. So. What I would, assuming that everybody's okay for discussion purposes still with the map. I've started drafting some of the text legislative, uh, regulations, and I'm trying to do it in a way that is the easiest possible way for everybody to understand, and then I will do, after we discuss it, I will do a full presentation. PowerPoint and everything. That explains why. Now. Let me put that as option one. Option two is to leave the language as close to the GC language as we can, the existing language, and just get the map done so that we get the heights changed. I will say that I am concerned about that because then we're not looking at setbacks, we're not looking at taking full advantage of what, putting buildings and increasing the density and being able to create a place as opposed to parking lots and buildings. Why would we want to not take advantage of such a bold bold and good way?
Our, our previous series of public hearings, we were proposing, our, our application at the time was proposing those placemaking updates that you're talking about.
I've written, I counted them, I've written five different sub-規則s for the GC zone in the last year. So.
So I, and I, I confess during deliberation at the time that, you know, it was a little tough to, to keep track of rev control, perfect, you know, personally, as we, as we saw those different variations and discussed things we liked and didn't like. I, I think it would be good for us to, to, you know, set those aside, take a look at, at one proposed list, and then, and then have a, a conscious plan for tracking any changes that we make, you know, and I, I mean, I think, I think that all that work we did over the last year to get to an updated set of, we'll call it the bulk regulations. You know, you could apply those across all these GC variant zones, and if we want to or need to have a few unique things that are special to a particular zone, as in the, the heights and the permissions required act within those heights, then the way we present to the public is, and for ourselves, for our own sanity, is here are the GCR zones, GC zones, this is the basic set of regulations. For GCR 50, it also includes these things, for 50.25, it's this. You know what I mean, so that we can keep track of them that way. And then while we are, you know, however long it takes us to, to read through those and it, you know, make, make edits or make changes, I'd say we keep the same binder of pages, and we, you know, we, we have some new text color or something that allows us to kind of keep track of what we started with, what we've edited, so that we're very clear on, for ourselves, we're very clear on what we're presenting to the public. You know, this time around.
I, I am fine with that. The other thing is, I was, Sierra and I were both at a conference last week, and I spoke to several people who do, that they're, not their only job, but a lot of their job is, they're professional renderers who do cityscapes for this kind of purpose. And, um, so I'm gonna do my best to get a, an RFP out. I'm gonna do better than my best, there will be an RFP on the finance director's desk within the next. By the end of next, by next Friday. To be able to get that so that we can get some renderings of what it would look like from different points, and they can do it off of Google Earth, or if they're close enough, they can come here and take a look. And the other thing that, while we're discussing this, that Sierra and I have talked about is the possibility of doing something with whoever we select as a renderer to do a public session on a Friday afternoon only because Saturday is when we, when city day is. And then do, it has them work all day Saturday on putting together those drawings and then presenting them Saturday evening at a public meeting, getting feedback and seeing where we can go, so we're. Things happen behind this.
I, I, I think, I think, I think my public input and share with the public is a, you know, I think, is a good idea. Certainly, you know, I don't know about the specifics of the dates and times, and that made the most sense, but you know, we can, we can cross that bridge and come to it. I guess the, uh, certainly the, you know, some of the input that we got at, but from the public was, you know, they want to make sure that whatever gets done looks nice, you know, so, so I think, I think it's, I think it's important to.
That's why the form of the stuff is really important, to say just that the building has to be, you know, 10 feet away from the end of the side, back edge of the sidewalk, or parking has to be in that. It's those, it's portions, it's things like, if the commit, that giving the commission the right to insist that certainly entrances have what are called shopfront entrances, which are, imagine that fire palls, you know, it's a lot of glass and, you know, a lot of times the windows will come in, be, um, and things like that, so. Yes.
Right. Thanks. I, in no way, what I'm about to say goes against doing this the right way. I think it's, we need to track things, but I think we need to move rather quickly and do, do this correctly and quickly, I mean, people getting evicted from their houses because of rental increases, we're having all kinds of housing, we all know this stuff, and we, we all on the same page to do it, I just, I'm totally in support of doing this correctly, but I would like us to expedite the process and get something out. We, we made some good compromises in terms of height in the map. I just don't want us to get bogged down into, you know, over engineering stuff, it's a small part of town, right? There's so many other areas of town that, you know, we want to, but absolutely, we don't want to forsake a sense of place. It's the, it's important part, so I just express full support of, as Mr. Ross says, track, tracking this, presenting this cleanly to the public so they can understand it and get buy-in, but I strongly support moving this process as, as swiftly as, as possible to get thi- this change out there and see if we can't get some more development, you know.
Completely agree with you, and, um, I, that is absolutely my intention.
We, we spent the better part, for your benefit, we, we spent the better part of like the last calendar year or so looking at best practices with regard to how trees, uh, you know, they're, how they take up sidewalk space and overhangs and porches and setbacks from the road, setbacks from sidewalks, whether, whether you can build right up to the edge of this property with a building, and also onto this property if you own both, and those sort of things. And, and I think all that work is done, I mean, I think that we have already done all that work, and, and I think the bulk regulations for GC and GCR variants is already. And, and I think the bulk regulations for GC and GCR variance is already accomplished by this commission. I think it's a matter of you know, your final revision of all those things that we put together.
And I'm gonna make it as tight as possible.
Yep. And then if we, we need to talk about you know, uh, uh, a, a, an appendix for this particular zone because of the extra height or something, then we'll do it in those terms. And I think that's the cleanest way to present it to the public. We're splitting up north end into all these little zones. This is what it means. We did that sort of, um, maybe with less detail than, than some are looking for, but we had all that information. And so I think if we present the text part better, I, I think we'll still get more pushback on uh, heights than we'll get on anything else, you know, parking and whatnot. I think a lot of that was wasn't, wasn't consumed like, like the more sensational parts of it were.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think that's true. I, you know, I, I think, I think the important thing is to to be able to explain those bulk regulations to the public in a way that makes sense to them. I mean, because, you know, if some of it is, is, you know, the words on, on paper don't you know, don't upnet, don't really lend themselves to understanding what it's gonna look like. And I think that's where the, you know, the renderings will be very helpful to translate that into something that people can see. So I, I think it would be worth spending some time to do that. But not, but again, to, to echo Mr. Boris's point, that, let's not, you know, let's not get so bogged down in the details that we you know, we lose momentum on moving forward. Just because, again, because the other piece of this is, we, you know, had proposed some regulatory changes that would allow um, building dwelling units in the commercial zone. And that got, you know, generated a lot of public feedback.
Right now, in the GC zone, you can only build two dwelling units.
Per parcel.
Per parcel.
Right, in terms of housing. So we're, so we're, we're trying to amend the regulations to address all those things. And, and also, you know, the recommendations that for how to revitalize Thane Street also include adding housing that's walkable to Thane Street. So that was, that's the other piece of it. It's a, it's a, it's a really good opportunity.
Yeah. Leslie, the, the visuals are so important. It's, I'm so glad to hear you're getting support on that because you know that the pitchfork community in the last iteration on Facebook had pictures of Berlin, like, you know, you're getting, you know, all these like four, you know, sixty-story building and things like that. So we really need, like, to bring the conversation down so people can really, if they don't like what's really happening, that's one thing, but you know, there's, there's such a distortion out there that sometimes people get emotional and, I mean, I even perceived it here in some of the public comments after people listened to it a little more, they're like, well, I'm generally in favor. But these are the areas that I'm a little concerned of and I think we rightly step back and address those. So I think the visuals are spot on and, you know, as the chair said, swiftly but not you know, irresponsibly.
Right. And you know, all those graphics that we had that were, that accompanied the regulations that showed the the details of, you know, porch overhangs and, and tree covers and things. I don't think those need to be reinvented. I think the, the renderings that we're talking about is some, some four-story apartment buildings in the corner of, you know, things as it turns into a bridge. You know, a rendering of what it looks like to be on Church Street looking out toward the river. You know, what is a, what is a, you know, two-story building look like on the east side of the road and a four-story building look like on the far, on the west side of the river? That's the rendering that, that is desired, I think, by the feedback that we got. And I, I don't see, um, I, I could do it with colored pencil, but uh, you know, I don't, I don't think it's a shouldn't be a multi-month process to get something like that back.
And my, my artwork would be worse than, than, than the text.
Yeah, right. I mean, I could do it with Frank, but.
My, my big concern like Bob is, okay, so we're gonna look at this, we're gonna meet again in June to discuss it, finalize it. So that means a public hearing isn't until July. So one of the things that we could do is to have a special meeting between now and June. And I will do I will get you absolutely as mu- I will try and finish it, but I can't make promises, but I will get you at least a solid draft for each of them. And it may be a single draft of the regulations and, you know, in one color, it's, it's, you know, five point five. Anybody has better labeling system, I'm all for that too. But and, or put them in charts so that, you know, the items on the left are all the same. And then there are columns for each different zone. Some people find that easier to read, sometimes people find that harder to read, but I will I will get you within at least a couple of days of the special meeting, if we do that. What, at least what I have to that point, and that would be something to discuss. So that we can keep it moving. I'm completely in agreement that it is critical that we keep this moving and get it done because there is that was on presses.
And, and I mean, when we're talking about six thousand square feet and the reason he's moving is because they build your apartments with these now. It's like every time you talk to somebody, there's apartments being built outside of front. But, and, and I do want to comment on, um, if this is what everybody else has agreed to, I'm fine with it, but your comment on, okay, you're gonna have the hill on the uh, the G R thirty-five, which is only two stories, and yet four stories across the road, you're gonna have four stories, two stories and the hill. And I think that's totally gonna dwarf the two-story buildings. And I think it's gonna look hideous, but if that's what everybody else has agreed to, then I'm not gonna hold up the process.
Yeah, I, I think what we were thinking is, if you look at the topographical map, the way the, the land falls away from the backyards on Church Street. You know, there's, there's something like seventy feet of difference between the Church Street backyard and the say the middle of the properties on the west side of Thane Street. And, and so if, you know, if from right below those backyards, you allow thirty-five feet, you, you may, I think, at worst, and we'll leave it to the artist to come up with this, but I think at worst, you're looking across the top of the building. And, and
Who's looking across the top of the
If you're standing in the backyard on a Church Street property,
Yeah.
you'd be looking at, you wouldn't necessarily be looking into a window, you'd be looking across the rooftop. And then across the street, the, the threshold is lower still. So when you get up to the fifty-foot level, like, you're not going from the rooftop to the middle of the building. It's it's nearly rooftop to rooftop, because the west side of things is even lower than the east side of things. And with setback from the road, it, it only helps our case. You know, and with the, if the parking requirements are in front or in back, you know, depending on where they put the, the building on the property. You, you're not gonna go from little building on east side to, you know, giant building on the west side. The height difference won't be that extreme.
I, I agree with your point and I would, would have preferred or I would have supported, you know, more of that, more height. But the issue here is, um, I think Mr. Russ is, is showing by our diligence and picking this apart, that we've done every attempt to take in everybody's thing. The, the, the bottom line is there are people that oppose development and it doesn't matter what we will put out there, they're still gonna come out. So that's gonna happen no matter what. But I think we've really done, you know, um, we're not letting that side have the final veto vote, which unfortunately is happening throughout Connecticut and so many other areas. So I think, I'm very, I'm, I'm proud of the work we're doing. I think we're it's the right approach. You know, we've made compromises and we're putting something out there that we can really stand behind visually and with good purpose. So I think that, you know, I, that's, that's why I, you know.
And you do have a three-story building there already. And that sits up even more. So my feeling is if somebody really wants to build their apartment, they're gonna lower that level. So it's flat to get the parking that. And if, you know, if they wanna build a three-story, they come in for a permit.
Yeah, to your, to your point, uh, you know, Mr. Boris has said about, uh, let's get something going. That was, that was the other half of the feedback that we got. It wasn't so much in the public hearing, it was, it was more um, online and outside of this, this chamber. But the other half of the feedback was just get something going, let's go, let's, you know.
And, and that's why I say, I'm, you know, if that's what people want, then I'm fine with it because I don't wanna hold this up anymore. But I know it was done at a meeting when I wasn't here. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. But I'm not holding on anything. Let's get it going. Like I said, if somebody really wants to build a three-story building, they'll come in and applaud for it.
So
And I was gonna make it, the guy with the better, like it
So my thing is, let's get this out of here because I went on the ramp to ninety-five and usually I'm driving, but I was in the passenger seat and I happened to look up and I saw all the apartments up there. I never saw those when I was driving. And I mean, we drove up that way, there's way too many.
They're four stories.
Yeah. On a hill, no.
I have walked this, but the wash down there to the grocery store and to the soccer shop, it's not a close walk.
Okay.
So one thing that I did when I was at this conference in Cincinnati, I have to say I was incredibly pleasantly surprised by Cincinnati. It was not what I expected.
It's the first start.
It's a really nice city. And there are a lot of places that have been run down that are coming back. So you see a lot of that transition. And I do have several photographs that show how I took them specifically for this reason. How you can have a bill, you can have three buildings in a row. One is two stories, one, one is two floors, one is three floors and one is four floors, and they are within five feet or so, the same line. So sort of that. So another reason for some of the metrics is so that people don't start building. You know, we want higher ceilings in the first level, but so we can, so it can go back and forth between retail, commercial, housing. You know, as the market changes, we don't have to tear down the buildings. But then above that, you have you know.
Reasonable residential heights and
And they could even be commercial at some point, if the, if the market demanded, but that's we know that's not what the market's demanding now, we know residential is it. But having that flexibility in any building you build anywhere these days, you should make sure that, in my opinion. That your grid and your, all your ATR stuff are, you know, all done in a way that you can have that flexibility.
All right. So we're, I think we're, you know, we're in agreement that we, well, I guess it's us. My feeling here is that the map that you distributed in late April is reflective of our discussion and it also you know, was also reflective of the input that we received from the public at the public hearings. So I think, you know, it makes sense to move forward based on that. Um, and the, we could date. Our, our next meeting is June eighteenth, June eighteeneenth. Uh, our next scheduled meeting. So, I mean, next week is a short week. You need some time to pull this together, correct?
Yeah, I mean, some of it I've started in anticipation or actually doing this.
So we're looking for something a week between, between June third and seventh, between the tenth and the fourteenth. Right.
And I can't do the fourth.
Okay. Doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to
Doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
I mean, you know, I mean, we're, we're, a lot of times we're, we're, we're competing with someone else who's got the boom bag. Right. Go ahead.
I can, but the room will probably be taken by somebody else. This room gets used all the time. But we, there are other places we can meet and it may be that we have to meet somewhere else because they are doing work in the lobby on the doors. And so that whole lobby is gonna be closed, which closes the major egress in case of emergency. So there is going to be, I think, a six-week period in June and July. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact dates, but our meetings may end up being moved for a meeting or two.
How about Tuesday, June eleventh? That gives you sufficient time to do and tighten them up as much as you want. We can have the meeting, go through it, make what minimal changes. But at this point, we would, there really shouldn't be that many, so.
Yeah, I guess what I'd ask is if you could get them out ahead of time, that we do a little homework, you know, read through, catch up. You know, but, but come in on that Tuesday, the eleventh, the rest of the day. You know, having kind of reapplanted ourselves with all that work that we've done.
I will get you whatever I have to Friday before that, have sauce.
Okay. I can, I can do Tuesday, the eleventh.
Could you put a checkbox at the bottom, yes, no?
I, at this point, I will do whatever you want. If you want it in color, do it in color.
All right, Tuesday eleventh works for me.
Tuesday, so Tuesday, the eleventh at uh, six-thirty?
The last special meeting was at five.
But that was because of the room use. And we really mess with people.
Yeah, we can do six-thirty. Some people work.
Colleen, what time, what time works for you?
Six-thirty is good.
Do you work?
Yeah, I, I also like to, but I live a five-minute walk from here, so.
Yeah, but if you work till six, so it doesn't help you.
All right. So we're, we're Tuesday, the eleventh, that's six-thirty, correct? Room TV.
Yes. It may be building TV. They're talking about having meetings in the Z House down at the beach, so.
Well, but what, what that makes me think about is that, uh, if we were to move into the public hearing, you know, during that six-week period, which maybe we weren't gonna get that far. It would be awkward.
We probably won't be.
Yeah. Good.
During that time.
Okay.
I think.
Well, we would be asking the public maybe to show up someplace where they weren't expecting, wouldn't get the turnout because they know they come here kind of thing, you know.
And your problem is
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's, I mean, that's a point we'll take it. We'll see, we'll see. I mean, we might get there quickly, but, you know, yeah. There's additional, there, there are additional logistics for that they have to deal with, I guess.
So you, you're looking at the public hearing in July? August? I think it's, let's get it, let's get the work done as quickly as we can and then we'll yes, I'm not sure we want a hearing, I'm not sure we want a hearing in August when most people are making
But if everything goes well, we have our special meeting, our regular meeting, scheduled public hearing, could have it in July unless
We'll, we'll see where the, with the bulk situation is, but um, I mean, if, if we, if we publicize an alternative location, we'll hope to see.
We don't wanna hold it up so because it's not gonna be here.
Right.
I, yeah, I am, listen, I'm all in favor of moving this phone in the most transparent and best way we can for the city, for the future.
All right. Any, I mean, anything else? Anybody else have any comments on this? We're, we'll we'll get, we'll get, so a meeting, a special meeting for June eleventh at six-thirty and, um, And, um, site to be determined. And we'll go from there soon. All right, um, anything else? Any, anything else on this topic? We can move on. Um, report of commission. So our April meeting is actually on Fratton Municipal Television, YouTube, so. That was, that was addressed, that was taken care of, so. Um, Leslie also sent out, um, the housing study, mixed to the housing study, the housing studies that have been done, so.
Colleen, I'll get these too.
Um, as well as some information about, um, open space requirements for multi-family buildings and, um, which have come up as, as a, as a concern. Um, so just to get on the record that, like, those, uh, those materials are out there and accessible. Uh, other issues, um, I went to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, Regional Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on April twenty-second, um, was an quorum as usual. So you can't transact any business, but, um, there was, there were a couple of discussions. One was about, um, short-term rentals and how, uh, people are, how the, the council of governments had put out some additional information, what recommendations about how to manage it. I think the, uh, that there was a, the town is now in the process of adopting a zoning regulation to deal with the town of crime. Uh, so that's, they, they originally had an ordinance, but now they're moving towards a zoning reg. Um, the recommendation that the council of governments was, don't do anything until there's a, there's a court case pending, I believe, at the state level, and don't do anything until that's decided. Because that could, you know, have an impact on how people move forward. Uh, they also distributed, uh, uh, ordinance that was developed by the town of Sudsbury, which was pretty much viewed as a, as a, as a good model. People are considering going that way. Um, so it's, I mean, this is, we're weighed some direction, I think, from the mayor and the council about how they think that the city ought to proceed, whether it's an ordinance or a, a zoning reg, but um, anyway, that, that was the update there. Uh, there were a couple of updates on what the COG staff is working on. And one of them is brownfields, which could be helpful for things like, uh, the granite school. Because there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of damage there from, I, I guess mold and things like that, so. Um, having the brown, having the hit less brownfield might be helpful in terms of future development there. And then they, um, there was, I mean, there was some some discussion of some of their environmental activities that the, the, the COG is working on. And then there was also, um, uh, they will provide a, uh, one hour of housing and a training for commissioners, uh, at, at meetings, probably remotely, but uh, they will, they'll provide an hour of training, uh, if we're interested in that. Just that, none of them, so. Um, that's what, um, that's the only things I have. Um, anybody else have anything? Uh, report of staff, public communications, anything, Leslie? I didn't see anything come in.
No, but for disclosure, I haven't read all my emails from the last week. I skimmed them, but.
Okay, I'm, I'm, nothing's come to me. Um, report of staff, anything, Leslie?
The only thing I will report without comment, um, is that the budget that was submitted to the council for planning and economic development, even though we're the same departments that um, submits a separate budget. Economic development budget, submitted budget was cut by eight thousand dollars. Um, planning, proposed planning budget was cut by seventy-two thousand.
I hope we have a much bigger budget, so we look like percent.
Okay, um, thank you. I had a question about, uh, the Colonel Ledgird School. Project status, anything happening with that? I, I've been seeing, I've been, I've been going to ask to sign any plans.
Um, it is moving forward. I've been in touch with the, um, I've been in fairly regular conversation with the developer. Um, he's still planning going on project. He's, uh, working on tightening up his financing. And, um, he may make, want to make a couple of adjustments, but it's not clear, so. When he, when he has a clear idea of what he wants to do and I can tell him what the, you know, options are for trying to do what he wants to do and then based on the option he picks, it would, if there were to be changes, they would likely have to come back here.
Okay. Um,
just one thought I should have mentioned when you were asking about, uh, portion commissioners. Um, you and I attended the same training that was provided by UConn uh, with, uh, Renata Bertoni.
Right.
On the other team, just, just after our last meeting.
Yeah.
And the, the, the one takeaway that I, I thought to write down was the fact that uh, the recommendation was that regulations should specify what modification staff can handle without coming back to commission. That, you know, we should, we should clarify that in some way, you know, changes to parking spaces and the changes, you know what I mean? Those, you know, some, in some way, we need to articulate what, uh, as we, as we receive, you know, our bulk regs that we've already looked at. Um, just something to bear in mind that we want to, we would like to have a, a, a threshold where we say, um, that, you know, our very knowledgeable staff can handle the following sorts of changes. And I, I think you're right. I think there were some things we talked about.
Yeah.
So we may already be fully compliant, but I, it was just something that was restated by, you know, the training provided by the UConn group.
I would want that.
You ready as well?
Just two comments on that. One is, um, the commit, the regulations, um, typically have a section that says commission or staff or mission or staff. Um, and so that's the delineation here.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, I've seen the staff ability to sign off on things administratively grossly abused by predecessors of mine. I'm not talking about here, um, other places. And so unless it's really a no-brainer. Um, and we're just, you know, being exercised and making the applicant wait. Um, but I'll give you an example. There was a EB wants to pour a slab to put a piece of machinery that they already have on the slab. It's in the cam, but it's it's way up. And so that was something that, to bring that to the commission when you're dealing with other things was a it's literally the size of not even a one car garage. Uh, so there weren't issues with, um, you know, how much impervious surface they were adding. It was, you know, it was a real thing.
Wasn't going to block anybody's view.
Wasn't going to block anybody's view. Um, it was. Yeah. So, but I tend to, when you see something on a minor that comes before you, it's because I tend to come to you with these things. I, I do not want to be that, that city planner that they go back on and say
Well, I mean.
I'd rather say, can you look?
A few years ago, we did, we did make it easier for the, you know, to, for the city planner to, to handle minor things like, you know, if someone wanted to convert a property for one approved use to another approved use, that the city planner could, could handle that. That was not, you know, as long as multiple uses were approved. You know, because at one time, those would come to the commission. So we did, we have taken care of some of those, some of those things. But yeah, I, I think we should keep looking at what, what makes sense.
And our new regulation should, should make that smoother or maybe not even necessary, you know, for we're getting away from the specificity of retail for selling bubble gum versus retail starting care products, you know? That, that shouldn't be a factor in things like.
Exactly. Well, I mean, the hook, but the hook allows, but that was, that was a good example of something that, that should.
Yes.
That's it. That's a, you know, that's, that's, that's a new, that's a and potentially, um, you know, we'd be, we'd need a good, we'd need a hard one, so.
And I, I'm not sure that it relates to this, but I did go to the Department of Transportation meeting that was here.
Yep.
We tried with the construction. Anybody watch that?
I thought about the bridge project, bridge, yeah. I, I zoomed it, yeah.
Buckle up. It's gonna be a bumpy ride. Four years of two lanes going on each side. We don't know how to drive now. Now that left-hand exit going up to Walmart and Stop and Shop. If you're not in the right lane, they're not getting. Twice a day.
Well, it'll, it'll slow down the track.
Yep.
But no, I mean, it's.
Yeah, well, that's, and I think exactly what I was saying.
They'll drive by so much slower.
If you're in Fort Worth, we should put a, something on the thing. If you live here, you hold out, that's right.
Here we go.
I, I, one general question, not to get ahead of ourselves, I don't know the answer, but is there any other, after we get this settled, is there any other area of town that we're considering doing a similar zoning change on? I, I can't, I mean, I'm trying to imagine where. I, I don't know. Do you, do you have something on your radar that makes sense in the P O C D that would lend it to it?
I, I thought we were looking at updating outdated language in all the zones.
Yeah, exactly.
This would be the model. And then from here on, maybe we wouldn't be, uh, updating anything that was particularly spicy or controversial.
Right.
But we would be updating, you know, common language and getting rid of these and vowels and things like that that are in the old language that we would be, you know, updating all those. But maybe you have one in mind that you want to tackle first.
I, I, let me put it this way. The regulations belong to all of you. You all decide whether you want to regulate, whether you want to change areas. Now, it is guided by the plan of conservation and development. Um, what I can say is I've been here for almost four years and we have tried to do things in different places. Um, so I definitely applaud the efforts that have been made. And I think we've taken the temperature and we've given people things to think about and it's all an iterative process. So even we may have wanted, or an applicant may have looked to make changes in one place. I would. I think you can always make places better. I do think that there are lots of things that could change here that would make lots of things better. Not all of them have to do with the zoning regulations. I think there are a lot of, uh, things that we actually don't have any jurisdiction over. But how wide streets are, how, you know, how are they? You know, can you allow you know, on-street parking in places because that slows traffic down? Do you want to make sure you don't have on-street traffic in certain places so traffic can get through and out or in? Um, so there are a lot of, there are a lot of pieces to the puzzle, some of which we control, some of which we don't. Um, but there are ways to influence those that we don't control outright. And there are, I think, a lot. I think that with the changes here, assuming that these go through, I think people will see that there are that there isn't easier way to make some changes that are sort of across the board, in this case, across the G C zone, um, and hopefully there'll be beautiful buildings that go up and they'll say, oh my God, this guy didn't fall.
In, in, to Mr. Rusty's point, we're doing a lot. I mean, I didn't mean it, my question didn't mean to say, is this, are we done with it? I think we are doing that effort across the whole, uh, zoning regulations. I just didn't know if there was a particular thing on the radar. Because I, I couldn't imagine in my brain. We, we're not a big city, so, you know, but.
Well, I, I will say, and I, I think we've broached this subject before, but, um, some of the feedback we got wasn't necessarily germane to the G C zone. You know, it was more expansive. And what are you people doing about this? Right? And, and one of those elements was, um, the, the, uh, the lack of use of buildings, buildings that have no current use and, uh, and have had no current use in some time. And so personally, my, my next hill to climb, I think, would be, uh, how do we, how do we, um, uh, in, improve that situation? Yeah, I, I know we've, we've touched on the subject and, and there is some response that, well, you can't do that. That's extreme or that's against the law or whatever, so. Uh, I, I think it's, you know, it's on us to come up with a creative solution for, um, incentivizing, driving. You know, uh, uh, the, the the purposeful use of buildings in the city. And, uh, you know, I, maybe that's, maybe that's regulation.
I think that adding housing, speaking of getting numbers is, you, I mean, sort of the rule of thumb is that you need, you need the residents before you actually get the, the other economic support drivers. Um, and so we talked about the barbells. Yeah. Um, that we need to, we need to look at developing barbells that either end at Fame Street. People talk about developing Fame Street, but there's not, the roadway is so constrained and buildings are right on the water or right into the hill. There are a lot of reasons why it is the way that it is. And so what we need are things that will flow into it from either end. And then if we can pick up the use of, uh, upper Fame Street Park and lower Fame Street Park and uh, we'll see some changes on upper Fame Street Park soon, I think.
One of the things I might just add, that I, I feel um, good about, about this project, about the map change and, and creating some area where you can have some height and density is um, because of the reasons you're saying. Otherwise, it's a very gentrifying sort of development plan and that excludes a lot of workers and, and a portion of our community that is most in need. So I think that, that we did right by doing this map and, and creating some areas where, you know, you could say to the community and, and developers, here's an opportunity, come, come with some good ideas to, to add some housing. Because otherwise, you know, it's, it's, it's the ugly thing that we see with people being evicted because rents are going up and it's nasty and, you know, whatever other the intention of people buy and up, upscale, that's sort of the trend. And if we don't create other opportunities, there's really nothing we can do. You know, from, from this seat here to improve that. So I, I'm just, yeah, right. So all points well taken. And I do, I do see, we're, we're doing a lot of work on the overall regulations and this stuff. And I think that what we can do now is the, the best we can do here to, you know, add value to the community.
And I'm in no way complaining. Um, I love my job. I love what I do. I've been doing it for a long time. Um, but Sierra and I are each one-person departments. And so it's, um, it's always easy for somebody to come and say, you should do this. It's always easy for somebody to come and say, you should do this, and you should do this, I guess, should. Can't. So. Those are all. It's, if, there's a lot to be done, if we had unlimited time, money, and staff. You know, we could make magic happen, but short of that. We are doing very, very, and I'm not taking anything that anybody said is very simple, take it that, but. We are trying really hard, and it's a really hard thing to do to, or to make the public to understand things that are not. Normal, people, everyday people who don't do this for a living. Spend their time thinking about it.
It's not, it's not on the top of a lot of people's brain, but, but, but I think, you know, I, I. One thing that, you know, Leslie, you, you know what people are coming in and asking about, what are they like, what, what, what properties are interested in?
Yeah.
And so, so that's good input for us, and that could help us to focus on where, where to, you know, where we should look next. Let's, let's get some things going up on, on the northern veins, despite, where is the next place, you know, you, you would know.
I can tell you that. The Five Corners properties have gone up for sale as individual. Carses.
There's been, there's been some work done on that.
And signed again. Oh, okay, maybe then. I talked to a few people, there was, there was somebody who was, who did put in an offer in, on all of them, but to be, their plan was to redo them as. Indecisive.
Yeah, so, so there's been some roofing work done on them, I, I can't tell what else is going on, but you can see that, you can see that they're.
I don't get it.
It's. Subway, the, the, the.
That, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, it's like.
It sounds more bushy than it is.
That's it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a potentially a good location.
So since you don't get out much. And you see these, I don't want specifics, I don't want detail. All I want to know is, are there people that are looking who might build these, because I don't want to segregate this out here, oh, nobody's coming. Okay, more than one, more than two, okay, I'll leave it there, that's, that's.
All right, very good, any, anybody have anything else? All right, there's no executive session, so, so a motion to adjourn.
How many?
All right, motion to adjourn from Ms. Bergeron, say a second. All right, all those are favorable, please say aye, aye. Of course, intentions, so we are adjourned at. It's your time, eight twenty-eight.